All right, all set.
Good to go. Since it is now five o'clock, I call to order the town normal planning commission regular meeting for today, Thursday, January 7th, 2021. The governor has issued a disaster declaration related to public health concerns caused by the statewide COVID-19 pandemic. As Chair of the Planning Commission, I've determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the risk of exposure to the COVID-19 virus stemming from an indoor gathering and that the remote meetings in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the commission, staff, and general public. Mercy, please take role.
Mr. McBride.
I'm here.
Ms. Wittergren.
Here.
Mr. Broad.
Here.
Mr. Bozer. Mr. Matika.
Here.
Ms. Lund.
Here.
And Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. I guess first I'd like to welcome all of you guys. It's been a while since we've had a meeting, so it's good to see your faces. And specifically, welcome back, RC, and welcome to Rachel. This is their first meeting in a long time, and for Rachel forever. The next item on the agenda are the minutes. Commissioners, if you've had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting, whenever that was, and that there are no additions or corrections, we'd be ready for a motion to approve.
Make that motion.
I second.
Mercy, please take role.
Ms. Wittergren.
Yes.
Mr. Matika. Ms. Lund.
Yes.
Mr. Broad.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. All right, thank you, Mercy. Now we get to item three of the agenda, which are the public hearings. And just to expedite things, I think we'll go and take care of C first. It is 20-05-04 PC, a zoning text amendment for One Normal Plaza PUD. And all we're looking for here is a motion to carry over to the next meeting as we discussed having this heard when people could gather together in a public setting.
Mr. Zimmerman, if I may, the town council has actually already postponed that, so there's no action required to carry that matter over.
Awesome, great. What about A and B?
Probably have to do something about those.
Okay. All right, so we will go on to a 21-01-01 PC, amended site plan for 905 Main involving senior living. Mercy, can you provide us with some details about this matter?
Sure. I am sharing my screen, so are you seeing an aerial of this property at this point? Okay, so this is the property we're talking about. This is 905 North Main. As you read in the report, this is part of the county's property, which is directly north of the town of Normals Fairview Park. And this property has several buildings and functions right now. It's where the juvenile detention facility is, the county's nursing home. There's an emergency management structure there where they do emergency management things. And then the building you're seeing in this picture is the historic sanatorium, which is a pretty old building in Normal. It has been vacant for several years, although it has previously housed various governmental bodies and activities. So the Laborers Home Development Corporation, they approached the county more than a year ago to talk about the potential conversion of this historic building into affordable senior housing. Basically, what they would do is convert this space into residential units and then build another building next to it, which you can see on this plan here. So here's the existing two-story historic building, and then there'd be a second building next to it that would be three stories, and yet it would sit a little lower in order to maintain the historic presence of the sanatorium building. It would be connected by a little enclosed walkway here on the northwest. The, as you could, as you read in the report, this process is actually part of a, an attempt to get tax credits from the state of Illinois Housing Development Authority. It's a pretty long process, and it's not guaranteed. And so what you're seeing tonight is a very detailed plan for what they want to do, and yet it is lacking in a couple of details that I'll mention later. That's because they need about this level of detail for us to feel comfortable recommending it and to show to the state of Illinois. But if, and if the state of Illinois grants them the tax credits, and they will come back with some additional details later. So at this time, what we know of it is that the location that they've selected is fine from a zoning perspective. It's S2 public lands and institutions in which you generally can't just have multifamily. However, our code does permit age-restricted housing in S2 property for 55 and older, and that's what they're proposing to do. The affordability component is great, but it's not a zoning requirement. So they're also, at the same time, interestingly, they are trying to get the sanatorium building to be designated on the National Register of Historic Places, which would also afford them some additional tax credits, which would support the project. What that means for us is that there's just a lot more eyes on this project to make sure that it's really attractive and really complements the historic character of this building, which is not designated locally. I mean, it's historic, but it's not, you know, a landmark or anything. So the details of the project, as I mentioned, the building addition is a little bit shorter. It sits off to the south. Parking, by code, they're supposed to have 66 parking spaces. They are asking to provide 34, and of those four would be accessible to someone with disabilities. They're also going to provide the code-required bicycle parking, which is kind of cool because the Constitution Trail is right near here. For landscaping, you can tell they have a lot of landscaping planned around the new and the old building. It will look very attractive. The lighting is kind of unremarkable. It's going to meet code, and it will be fairly plain, which is great. I mean, the buildings are the feature here, not the lights. As far as signage goes, they just want to put a little directional sign in because as you can see on this aerial, people are still going to access the site from the same driveway off of Main Street, and they'll come through, and there will be a directional sign here to kind of point people in here if this is where they're going. And then there will still be a way for the county, of course, to get where county folks need to go. They'll also be adding a sidewalk along this driveway up to Main Street, which currently does not exist on the site, so that will be a really nice addition because there is a very active bus stop right up there. As far as garbage goes, you know, they're going to have a dumpster that meets code, and that's with screening and their mechanicals. They'll be tucking away here and there. They won't be in any sort of nuisance. Stormwater detention is something they'll work out when they have an engineer on board. So those are all the details of the project. Oh, I guess the one I failed to mention is that there will be 16 residential units in the historic building and then another 25 in the new building. So as you read, we're very comfortable with this project. We're more than comfortable with it. We're very excited about it. This is going to help the town meet some of the affordable housing goals that we have in our comprehensive plan and in our regional housing plan. We know that there's a need for low-income housing, especially for seniors. This will be designed to have a lot of features for people who either have physical mobility issues now or who develop them as they age, so that's a really nice feature as well. Certainly, it's going to be a lovely project. Most of what they're building is on current parking, so it's not even really going to take up more green space. It's just very well-connected. For low-income people, having access to the trail and to public transit with good frequency is really important and just a really nice amenity. So there's just a lot of, a lot of things going for it. We, we hope, we wish them the best in getting their tax credits from the state. I'm not going to go through all the reasons in the report why it meets all of our other plan goals. I think you know that we, affordable housing is important to us. So our recommendation is that you approve it, including the variance for the parking spaces being less than code. And then the conditions would be that we have a few more landscaping details submitted when they bring a real landscape architect on board. We're also going to be needing this to be subdivided, depending on how the county sells or leases this property to them. That will require some code variances. I will say there will be very technical variances that we are completely comfortable with, but there will be another process for that. So we are, and that they'll, they'll deal with stormwater per code. So that's what I have there. I know that we have one person from the public who has signed up to testify, but I know Mr. Zimmerman always goes to the applicant first, but I just wanted to say, you know, we do have somebody. So that's what I have.
All right, I'm unmuted, right?
Yep.
Awesome. Commissioners, do you, you have any questions of Mercy or Gregor Town Staff? Hearing none.
I have a question.
Oh, good, Mike.
And this, and maybe when the presentation comes, something we can get more details on, so I'll kind of ask this in advance. What's going to be the staffing, kind of in-and-out traffic patterns? Because I know some residents along Main Street have asked about the 40 mile an hour zone there. I asked about a stoplight, and that's not something that's directly related to approval. I think something that's Town Staff needs to be aware of as this goes forward. You know, do we need to restrict that speed zone down to 30 instead of 40? And I know IDOT controls really Route 51, so that's really going to be more of an IDOT, but IDOT with Town Staff item.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Zimmerman, you can make the call, but Ryan Otto, the town engineer, I think he's on this. He has an answer to those questions. Ryan, are you on here?
I am.
I haven't seen him, but, oh, good, okay. Oh, good, there you are. Do you, AJ, do you want him to talk now or wait till the presentation, or how do you want that to go?
Let's, let's just open the public hearing, and then we can have him talk.
Okay, it's fine. So you want him to actually address that right now, or?
Yeah, no, so I guess open, open the public hearing, and then we can address it, and then we can have, we can have others talk as well. So to address your question, Mike, we'll just open the public hearing, and at this point, we'll take public comment. But specifically to answer your question, Ryan, if you want to talk, again, it's just, please say your name, your address, and affirm to tell the truth, and.
Oh, Ryan works for us.
Well, don't, oh, he's part, okay, yeah, he can answer it now. He can answer it now. That's fine. Now it's fine.
Yes, but I will say that Ryan always tells the truth, so go on, Ryan.
Good.
Thank you, Ms. Davis and Mr. Zimmerman. Mr. Matika, to your question about the speed limits on Main Street, you stated correctly that Main Street is under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation, and we have had recent conversations with them. In fact, we've had conversations with Ms. Linda Hickey, I believe is going to testify here in a moment regarding her concerns with the speed limits, and we have forwarded those to IDOT for consideration. With that, we also continue to monitor and have been continuing to monitor this intersection for several years for warrants for a traffic signal. To the best of our knowledge, it has not yet met those warrants. We did speak with the Department of Transportation, and they are willing to consider a full warrant analysis this summer for that intersection. So, so we'll continue to monitor the situation there. And the senior housing, we don't anticipate it impacting peak volumes, which would be one of the chief contributors to the warrants for a signal there. We see facilities like this probably tend to be more random in their arrivals and departures versus maybe, you know, first thing in the morning or first thing in the evening. And the petitioner may be able to answer the question about staffing. I'm not, not certain on that one, so maybe they can address that. But we don't anticipate a significant increase in loading from this facility.
And Mr. Zimmerman, just so you know, Tim Ryan is the person affiliated with this project. He's the applicant.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions of Town Staff before we open the public hearing? Not seeing any. Now we will open the public hearing.
Rachel had her hand raised. Rachel had her hand raised.
Wasn't sure if I spoke up or just put my hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Mercy, you had mentioned the bus stop. That is out on the street. Is that correct, or does the bus come into the parking lot area?
It stops, it only goes along Main Street. Yeah, it doesn't enter the site.
And do you know what that distance is? What is that walking distance to the facility?
Um, I could do a measurement while we're all looking, but it's, I can tell you that Connect Transit is. Oh, sorry, I know there's a delay. I can tell you that Connect does not drive into most of these sites, and in particular, on a site like this with a narrow asphalt, I mean, it's adequate for regular traffic, but it's not the kind of site that they typically look to take their buses back. But you're, yeah, it's, it's, it is this distance.
Okay, and my question is really, is there any concern about just the length of that walk from the bus stop to the facility?
I do not have concerns with it, so this is well under, like, this is under a quarter of a mile, well under that, and that's a very standard, that's a very standard planner kind of distance to be from things. And just to have the sidewalk added is going to be an improvement over not having a sidewalk right now. So, yeah, I mean, there are always, there's always the possibility someone won't be able to make it that distance either, but it's, it's a pretty, pretty nice, pretty nice distance for most folks to walk.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that, Rachel. These little pictures, it's hard to see your hand up there, so. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Looking closely here, not seeing any. Okay, now we will really open the public hearing. So if you'd like to speak, please state your name, your address, and affirm to tell the truth. And I guess we can, we can begin with, Mercy, the name that you gave us.
Linda. Linda Hickey. And I think Taylor will have to do the unmuting again.
Good evening, this is Linda. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Linda, we hear you fine. Just state your, your full name, your address, and affirm to tell the truth, and then, and then, and then we're happy to hear from you.
Okay, my name is Linda Hickey. I live at 908 North Main Street, which is right across from the McLean County Nursing Home. I've lived here for 29 years. I agree to tell the truth.
Perfect, and go ahead with, with, with what you'd like to say.
Well, I think Mike and Ryan addressed a lot of my concerns as far as a stoplight being installed at the intersection of Summit Street and Main, which actually is also the intersection of the current driveway to those buildings and Main Street. First of all, to answer kind of your questions, or in one question I have, which side of the driveway will the sidewalk be on? Will it be on the north or south side?
The north side.
North side, okay. And the bus stops on the south side, but I don't see that. It's probably not a big deal at all, since it's a narrow road.
It's very possible that that could be changed, too, so we can point it out to them.
Also, having had a parent at the nursing home prior, the buses do go into there. Usually, it's the Connect Transit Mobility Bus that takes residents to and from appointment and whatever else they might need. Also, the larger buses would go in there, and I'm not sure if that's still going on now. And a lot of emergency vehicles use that entrance to obviously go over to the nursing home for, for reasons, medical reasons. And I didn't know if that was maybe taken into consideration.
I, I think that it would be best if Tim talked about that, only because his, he's, his group is, looked at the site and found it to be really suitable, so I'm sure they would have taken that into account, but he'll, so he could probably talk about that kind of operationally.
Is he there? Is he here on there tonight?
He is here. But do you, do you have other questions? Because we could, we could, we could take care of any questions and thoughts that you have, and then we'll, we'll bring Tim on to address that question.
Sure, okay. Okay, and also I have the concern about lowering the speed limit from 40 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour from this intersection, which is 30 miles an hour up to that intersection, to 30 miles an hour north onto Rab Road. I know the most recent traffic study was in 2007. Main Street has gotten much busier since then. Traffic, traffic's traveling south on Main is getting busier with increased amount of businesses up there on the north end. I know that that is an issue. I guess there will be 41 total units. It sounds like, how many residents would that potentially be per unit or, or total? And I guess why fewer parking spots? And it sounds like the new building is going to take part of the parking from the sanatorium, or will it actually affect the nursing home parking? And the residents, if they're senior housing, they potentially would have their own vehicles also, and so that could be additional traffic. Just, you know, wondering if that was, was, it might be the case, too. I think the analysis this summer that Ryan spoke about is a very good idea. I like hearing about that. And you said it was for low-income people, the housing, correct? And I believe that touches on the questions I might have.
Okay, we will have Mr. Ryan talk about the emergency vehicle question you asked, and then the 40 to 30, and these other questions about the residents, we can, we can take care of as well.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Hickey, and if, if, Taylor, if you want to mute her, then we can, I'll have, I'll have Tim this morning. Oh, hang on, real quickly, does anyone else have any questions of, of Linda Hickey, Commissioners? Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much, and I see that you're unmuted, Mr. Ryan. Just state your name, address, and affirm to tell the truth, and then that'd be fantastic.
Tim Ryan, address is 2201 Eastland Drive, Suite 4, Wilmington, Illinois, and I do affirm to tell the truth. So I, I think I jotted down the questions here that Ms. Hickey would like addressed. As far as emergency access, our use of the site will not restrict any access that is allowed to the, you know, the other parties who are using the different parts of the site as well. We will not restrict any, our, our development there will not cause any hindrance on any access to the nursing home, to the JDC, to, I believe there is an emergency management storage area in the back. So our site would have, would have no hindrance on any of that. So everyone can still use the site as they currently do now. Would you like me to address the parking as well?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, so parking, that's kind of based on our, what we have seen at our developments that we have senior developments. We have, let's see, or two other senior developments. One is 60 units, and one is 100 units. At both of those properties, we do not have parking for one for each unit. It is significantly less than that. For instance, I believe our 60-unit one, we maybe have 25 parking spaces, and it's very similar setup to this in the main area of town. It's along a bus route, senior population, and we have had no issues with, there not being enough parking for the residents there. So that's kind of where we base this on, is our history with our, our other developments that we've had over the years. But as far as, I think the question also was, would we be taking any of the nursing home property? We will not be taking any of their property. This project won't interfere with any of the nursing homes functions and operations, so we will not be taking away any of that. You are correct. Most of the residents may have a car. We also anticipate some using the public, the bus access, which is kind of why we picked this area, because of its great access to transit. So in, we don't envision every single tenant having a vehicle on the site, but I guess that is always a possibility. Trying to make sure I've covered all of Ms. Hickey's questions.
She mentioned there were 41 units, and she was wondering about the number of residents.
So resident, so the development is made up of studios, ones and twos, bedrooms. So in, in the two-bedroom, you know, you could have, I believe by IDOT standards, they allow two people for one bedroom. However, typically what we see is, you know, you just have a married couple and possibly a spare bedroom for grandkids who are spending the night or something like that. So the history on our projects are typically in a senior development. You're only seeing either the husband and wife or possibly a person and a caretaker being in the, in the unit. It's not an extended family unit. This development wouldn't allow for that because of it being senior. I believe, was there, I'm not sure if it was a question on affordable, whether it was affordable or not, but I guess I can just confirm it is affordable. It is based upon individuals' income, would determine the type of rent that they would pay to the development or to the project.
Mike, go ahead, Mike.
This, I think, would also help with Linda's question, staffing. Because I think part of the concern was how much vehicle traffic in and out. How many staff people, shift changes, folks coming and going might be involved with that?
Sure. So staffing-wise, the project would have one property manager. They would not live on-site, so the property manager would just be there, your typical work hours. And then we would have most likely one maintenance person to begin with, if it is needed. That could always be added later, but typically we employ at our properties, one maintenance person, one property manager, and they are just there during normal business hours. If there is an emergency, obviously, the, the maintenance personnel can be called in if something needs to be done. But as far as a shift change, it really would just be your traditional eight to five or nine to five hours.
So if, so if someone is needing extra care, that's provided through other agencies, that's not part of the, the onsite program?
That, that is correct. It is independent living for seniors aged 55 and older. We ourselves do not provide any sort of medical care to the residents. That would have to be contracted out.
Thank you. I think that, that maybe answers, that helps answer that question about traffic.
Okay, perfect. Does anyone else have any questions for Tim before we move on? Okay.
I have a question real quick, AJ.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Rachel.
Tim, how, how confident are you, I guess, at your proposals to get the tax credits from the state? And a follow-up, if, if that doesn't go through for some reason, are you still going to proceed with the project or no?
So I'd hate to say how confident we are, only because I would hate to jinx us. I, I will say that we have a very strong track record with the state. That goes a long way in them knowing that we can accomplish these types of projects. We are actually just wrapping up a project in Paris, Illinois, a high school that was designed by the same architect who designed this building. So we are just wrapping that project up, and that one, we took us a couple of tries to get it done, but that has nothing to do with the project. It's usually just a funding issue, and you got to maybe wait your turn. So I would, I would hate to say I'm overly confident, but the site is, you know, very well-supported by the town, by the county. It looks great. It scores very well. The only issue, like I say, I could see is, are there just other projects that maybe score higher that would put us down on the list? So I'd hate to put a percentage to it, or say, I say one way or the other. But the application itself seems to sit very well. It seems to hit the priorities. However, if it's not awarded, we're not, we have no intention to walk away. As long as we're still allowed to pursue this site, we'll keep pursuing it until someone tells us not to. I really, I think the proposal, I mean, I'm, I'm biased, but I think the proposal we've come up with looks really nice, and I think it'll do a great service to the community.
Great, thank you. We'll be sure to knock on wood.
Yes.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, any more questions? Let me check. I don't see any more questions. Um, so, uh, Tim, thank you for, uh, for taking the time to come and, and, uh, answer those questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, Mercy, do you have any other people who want to talk on this? Do we know?
No.
Okay. Seeing, um, I guess no other, no other questions that we can, we can.
Hello?
Oh, hello?
Hello, it's Linda.
Oh, hey, Linda.
Okay, I, I had one more question following up on what, um, Tim had said. The forty-one units total, how many are one-bedroom and how many are two-bedroom?
Um, I will have to pull up our, oh, thank you, Mercy. My cheat sheet in front of me here. Um, so you're looking at a total of it, I believe it is. You asked for one and twos, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Twenty, twenty-five one-bedroom, eight two-bedrooms.
Twenty-five one-bedroom, eight two-bedroom?
Correct. And then the remaining are studios. So those would be eight studios.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate your time, everyone. And I believe you've answered my questions. Um, timeline, if all goes as expected, when do you see?
Another one of those ones, another one of those ones I hate to answer. But if, in a perfect world, if everything goes according to plan, um, March, April time, we could find out on our low-income housing tax credits, which are administered through the Illinois Housing Development Authority. Our, um, state and federal historic tax credits would probably come later in the fall if we are awarded those. If those are approved, you're probably looking, there's a potential construction could maybe start very, very late this year. Uh, but most definitely, if everything went to plan, it would be probably first quarter of twenty-twenty-two. In theory, we could probably start on the existing structure during the winter. And then, uh, once, you know, weather improves, you move to the, kind of the outdoor stuff.
Okay, thank you. Um, how can I keep up on this as far as, you know, when things are happening, or will you just put that out to the public through newspaper, radio? How are you going to do that?
Are you asking me? The applicant?
I was gonna say, like, as far, this is, as far as the public process goes, if there's any additional public process, we'll do the same thing. The postcard, the sign, whatever, but, right. But I don't, that said, I don't know that there's any public process happening after this, but what you can definitely do is call me anytime, like, put it on your calendar and call me every two months and I can just tell you what I know. Um, but Tim may have other, um, information too.
Yeah, um, I guess as far as project updates, you know, as we move throughout this, we'll, we'll keep the town and county informed of everything that we are doing so they are aware of our progress. Um, we don't tip, we don't typically just publish out to the public, you know, the status of our projects just because of honestly how long they can take. But, you know, if you reach out to Mercy, you could definitely, she would have the most up-to-date information as we move through this.
Okay, um, also, do you know, I know you probably haven't taken bids yet, will this be done with, um, local contractors, hopefully union contractors?
Yes, this will be built, I, I can confidently, this is probably the one thing I can confidently say with, for sure, it will be built all-union. Um, we are affiliated with the Laborers International Union of North America. Um, so this will be, uh, an all-union project being built with all local trades.
Great. Thank you, everyone, so much for answering my questions and including the public in this forum. Mercy, you've been wonderful to email with. Thank you.
Well, you know where to find me.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, wonderful. So I think, Tim, I don't know that anyone has any more questions. I'm not seeing any more hands raised. Um, and these, this, these, those are the two people that we're going to talk, right, Mercy?
That's it, yep.
Okay, wonderful, okay. At this point then, we can, we can, uh, close the public hearing and, um, commissioners, do you guys, uh, have any questions of, of Mercy, Greg or town staff?
I have just one more question, AJ.
Yep, perfect.
More of a technical on the application. The lower right-hand section under property information, you have adjacent property and zoning. Are those correct? Cause I saw it on page three, um, that the neighboring zonings were different, but these are listed as all S-two.
Um, let's see here. So I think the applicant filled that out and I don't know that I changed it, but in my, uh, in my report, that's actually where I try to spell out adjacent zoning. So right here in this paragraph, that is accurate. So, um, it was a good try on Tim's part. Cause it is, I mean, the building itself is sitting in the middle of an S-two property, so it is actually kind of true. But, you know, the whole property is surrounded by different zoning, so.
Right. Good catch, Rachel, good catch. Okay, so, uh, assuming we have no other questions, the staff, um, at this point, we would be, um, ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion that the project be approved with the stipulations that staff has added to it.
And I'll second.
Perfect. And Mercy, please take role.
Uh, Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Broad.
Yes.
Mr. Bozer. Mr. Bozer, I think you're on mute. Can't hear you, but you could give me the thumbs up. Okay, I got it. Uh, Mr. Matika.
Hi.
Ms. Lund.
Yes.
Ms. Wittergren.
Yes.
And Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
So this will be on the council agenda for Tuesday, January nineteenth. Note that that is a Tuesday because of the MLK Junior holiday on Monday. The meeting is at seven and if anyone, Linda, if you have any desire to weigh in with the town council, contact me in advance. I'll give you instructions on how to do that because it's another Zoom situation.
All right, wonderful. Now we will go to, uh, number three, B, uh, twenty-one dash zero-one dash zero-two PC. A minute side plan for two thousand East College, um, a solar, um, array. And Mercy, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure, sure. And I did, I see that Colleen Ramsey, they're on the phone, or they're on the Zoom. Um, there were several neighbors from the fields that got in touch with me beforehand and I forwarded out emails to everyone. Um, and pretty much everyone did not seem interested in participating in the Zoom for a variety of reasons. I did resend a phone number today, so if anyone is watching on YouTube right now and wishes you could call in, uh, check your email, you have a phone number in there. Um, it's part of the Zoom instructions, but, um, we should be able to pick you up. Okay, so I have shared on the screen the site that we are talking about. Two thousand East College is First Presbyterian Church at the corner of College and Hershey. They are, uh, they operate under a site plan based on their zoning, which means anytime they do anything significant, they have to go through a public process to amend their site plan. The last time they did this was in two thousand and four, when they put on a building addition and relocated some outdoor amenities like their playground. Um, so here we are sixteen years later. Um, what the church is requesting is the installation of a ground-mounted solar array system on the northwest portion of the property, roughly shown in the black outline that I drew on here. Um, it's more specifically shown on, uh, this drawing here. Okay, so the area that it would occupy is about a hundred and eighty-five feet by a hundred and seventeen feet. Um, each of the panels would be about nine feet tall. There's a little illustration of what they look like. You've probably seen them before. Um, they would be oriented towards the south, so the panels would be tilted towards the south. This property has a, um, fairly sizable storm sewer that runs through it. So you can kind of see it on the aerial, that faint color or that faint difference is where a big storm sewer runs through there. So there can be no development in that easement. So there's about twenty feet there that just cuts right through, that's off the table. Uh, as you know, there's a row of evergreens along the north and most of the west side. There's also a berm over here. And they, uh, there's some street trees along Hershey that are in the public right-of-way. Um, as part of this project, they would not need to add any like overhead power lines or lighting or fencing, all of which I did not know because we, we have not encountered this kind of proposal yet, which I noted in the report. Um, I will say that the code is, the zoning code is not clear on ground-mounted solar panels. They're just new enough that the code hasn't caught up with that yet. So what we do is we look at the guidelines in the zoning code that governs site plans and site plan amendments. And I listed those in the report and I'm not going to read through them. But the goal is that you look at surrounding uses and you try to prevent any sort of significant negative impacts on neighboring properties and property owners, whether that's adverse impact based on noise or pollution or, you know, bright light or aesthetics, you know, all sorts of things. Um, and so we, we have found that given this site and specifically how much room is available and the existing evergreens and the existing berm, you know, we, we have, we're supporting it. Um, and I, and there are several neighbors to the north that do not support this, so. And I'll get to that in just a second. Um, the reason why we felt that, like, specifically given that there wasn't a lot of code guidance is we looked at things like, would there be any sort of glare, although I believe these panels aren't supposed to cause glare anyway, but in any case, the, the portion of the panel faces to the south, so it's not facing any residences at all. Because what you have is you have residences up here and then you've got residences over here. We believe that the screens, for the most part, will be screened by the berm and the existing evergreens, but we wanted to bulk that up to protect the neighbors by requiring the same amount of trees to be planted at a staggered distance between all of the existing trees. So you'd end up with a, a very solid row of evergreens, um, ultimately. These don't cause any sort of noise. There's just nothing, they don't really do anything. The church is proposing to put pollinator habitat under it, so it would be, um, instead of mowed grass or gravel, um, they would be growing pollinator-friendly things like, you know, native, native, like bee balm and, you know, bergamot and whatever, you know, pollinators enjoy. And this brown-mounted solar array is designed to serve the church only, so this is not like designed to be selling to the grid and, you know, making money or anything. We do find support for this kind of concept in the comprehensive plan and the vision plan, which do have sustainability components. That said, this is a site plan in a public hearing and that, this is where people get to express their, their opinions and thoughts on this. We, we got, uh, let's see, how many emails? We got quite a few emails. We got four emails against it, but we got a petition, um, signed by twenty-seven individuals that live north of this site in the fields. Uh, those twenty-seven folks, that's twenty addresses, so some of the people are living in the same property. We did get many emails in support, um, but also a lot of people on the Zoom call are here because they are in support. I know that the Ramses are here from the fields and they are not in support of this, but, uh, just know that all the, the rest of the people in the fields that are not on this Zoom and they are opposed to it, they just didn't feel like it was possible for them to participate via Zoom for, you know, technology reasons. So we've tried everything we can to get their opinion out to the planning commission in lieu of them being here. So, um, I think that, oh, and I was asked specifically beforehand to answer the question of what kind of precedent would this set? And, um, you know, if this were approved in this location, would this mean you could put ground-mounted solar panels anywhere? Um, especially near residential? And the answer is, every site plan is unique to that site. But in every case, we should be applying the same standards from the zoning code. So, so, I mean, if, if there were these identical standards somewhere and we applied the code in the same way, we should come up with the same answer. But that, you know, every site is, tends to be a little bit different. So that is what we have. Um, we are recommending that it be approved and our only condition is that they make sure to stay out of the stormwater easement.
All right, thank you, Mercy. Um, so I drove by this place twice just to sort of check it out, because I just, I, uh, it was, I just wanted to see what it looked like. And how high is that berm? Cause that berm seemed a lot more substantial as I was driving by. I mean, it seems like the, the houses to the north, um, may be elevated as well a little bit, but that, that berm, um, seems fairly substantial.
Greg, would you have a guess on if you had to put a height on that berm?
Yeah, that, that's always a little misleading. I, I guess if I were to throw a number at it, I would say it was probably in the range of four or five feet in height from the established grade.
So this would be, this is a three-D rendering that was generated from the north. And of course, the applicant is on the Zoom and will also be able to speak more to the specifics.
Okay, this would be the first time that, that a solar array, uh, ground solar array was put, was, was allowed in, in, in the town of Normal, but there, there are still, uh, solar panels that are on numerous, um, houses throughout the, the town of Normal, correct?
Yeah, in fact, kind of in a, in prep for this meeting, anticipating that question might come up. Um, just in the past year, the, our department issued about twenty-one solar installation permits. Um, fourteen of those were, fourteen or fifteen were in conventional residential settings, all roof mount, Mr. Zimmerman. And then also we have about six or seven commercial arrays that are, some have been installed, some are in progress. And so again, we have about twenty to twenty-one, um, that have been issued this past year. And I think if Mercy didn't mention it already, I'm sure it would come up, is that i- in this particular case, had the church come to us or the, or, uh, the, the installer had come to us and said, hey, we're, we're contemplating doing this solar project, we're going to do it on the church roof structure, we would allow that. That's a little bit of a, um, I won't say it's a conflict, but, um, our code is silent on solar arrays in particular, um, with regard to zoning. But as Mercy mentioned, the whole notion of an actual ground-mounted solar array is, is new territory for the town. And so, you know, conventionally playing it a little bit safe, we, you know, we've, we've guided the church and the, uh, the installer through this process, letting them know it's, it's, it is kind of new territory. And so, you know, we've done our best to try and identify as many of the questions or issues that might have come up with an installation like this, but, uh, again, it's, it's relatively new territory.
Okay, and just, and take a step back. I mean, Mercy did talk about all the letters and emails that we got, because she sent, uh, many of them. So to the extent that people are watching, um, on YouTube or whatever, uh, the letters that, that, that I read were William Detmer's letter, Joe and Maxine Stevens' letter, a letter from Barb Perry, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kenneth Weakman. Um, I believe, uh, Betsy, um, Menzger's on this, but I, we, we got her, uh, correspondence. Email from Paul Harmon and Bob Bradley, um, James Wilson. And, um, then we did get that petition with, with the twenty-seven signatures from the, from the subdivision from the north. One of the questions that they had, and so maybe they're not here, but they're, they're talking about why this had to be in the upper, uh, the upper, uh, left-hand corner of the, of the, um, property. And I think Mercy, that answer is what, is what you've already talked about is the, is the, uh, uh, storm water.
Storm sewer easement.
Or storm sewer easement, yeah. Okay.
And I mean, the applicant could probably speak to that. I mean, I, this is a rough outline here. I mean, I suppose you could change the configuration slightly. I don't know, I don't know what distance from here would actually make a significant difference. Like, I, I don't know how that would, um, what, if that would satisfy any concerns. I mean, when you get over here, it's just a, less of a block of space and that's really about it. There's, you know, there's really nowhere else.
Okay, and, and these, these would have a maximum height of nine feet and not thirteen feet as some of the, some of the, uh, letters that were, or emails were mentioning.
I think someone mentioned thirteen feet in an email, and I think that's because they traveled to see another installation. And, and those might very well have been thirteen feet. I, that's entirely possible. So I, I did let them know, like, just FYI, these will be shorter now. I don't know if nine feet made them feel a lot better, but they are nine feet.
And, okay, and, and then the last question I have, and then I won't let the other commissioners speak. The, uh, the pollinator habitat, is that something that, that from a, from a, um, I guess, environmental, uh, standpoint or, or is that something that, that is favored?
Well, and this is a, so I'm going to steal a little bit of the church's thunder. Well, and this is a, so I'm going to steal a little bit of the church's thunder. And just say that, yeah, this, there's the green, the green team at the church is, is definitely, um, part of this. They certainly have as part of their mission environmental concerns. Pollinator habitat would, would address some of those concerns. That was listed in the petition and in the emails as one of the concerns. I mean, basically the concerns were just the appearance of the panels in general. Some people just don't like how they look. The pollinator planting and the idea that it could be a nuisance and also maybe unattractive to some people, but that it could cause a nuisance. And then, and just the effect that all of this in total would have on property values. So that, that was kind of the, the themes that I picked out of those emails. But, um, yeah, the church can speak more specifically though, to like why they would want to do pollinator plantings.
And as a real, just like, I guess, no, one last question as relates to the, the property value. Did see, uh, I, I didn't see any proof one way or the other that, that, that there was, there was anything definitive about property values at all.
We, yeah, we don't have anything.
Okay. Okay. Um, sorry for taking, asking them any questions. Uh, other commissioners, you guys have any questions? Of, of town staff before we open the public hearing?
Do you have one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
With relation to the evergreen trees, the additional trees that are going to be planted, can someone talk to, what's the maturity level of those trees? Are they going to be, um, small or are they going to be full grown?
Well, when they install them, our code requires that be, they be installed at a six foot height to start with. And then ultimately depending on the species, um, but it looks like, you know, they're looking for, the ones that are out there now, they're saying are about 20 feet. So I would presume that that, I mean, a maturity height of that would be within reason, but they're supposed to be installed at a six foot height.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have a quick question. Um, I think Mercy, you brought up precedent. So this is the first in the town that we know of in this type of, um, installation. Is there any other communities that we can look to or you've looked at that have done something similar to this? Whether it's not just the installation, but how their code has changed or been adapted to include solar as a part of the zoning? I guess that's where I'm thinking like, are, are we putting cart before horse in, um, approving something without looking at, at the, the code first?
Sure. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's certainly a direction that, that this could go. It could be, you know, change the code and, and to look at projects later. It just so happens that this project came and here it is, you know? And, and people are entitled to, to ask, you know, for, for a project to be approved. I will say I've looked at other communities ordinances and they run the gamut from like places that are just 100% supportive of all renewable energy type projects to absolutely know they are ugly, you know? So you got that. And then in the middle, you have just a lot of projects where they didn't, they try to screen them. I mean, that seems to be the big, the big concern is just generally screening them in a way that doesn't actually ruin the value of the solar gain. I mean, you got the solar panels have to have access to the sun, but because they don't make noise, it's really the visual that anyone might have the most concern with. So screening is a common requirement. But no, we haven't, we don't, we don't have like a proposed code in the, you know, waiting in the wings, although they exist. I mean, there's like a model code out there that you could just look at.
And this seems, this seems unique anyway. Um, Mercy, correct me if I'm wrong. But, uh, from what I could gather by doing my rudimentary research is that you had, you had these solar arrays for, say, the size for like utility company that was huge. So taking up massive space that people would talk about how, what, what were the effects of that? Then you, then on the other side, you have them putting panels on someone's house to offset their, their, uh, their, um, environmental footprint. And this seems to be, even though it's on the ground more akin to that sense, this, this is only going to power this, this building, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, this is sized to address only this property.
Um, any other questions of, of staff? I'm looking at you, Rachel. Any hand up there?
No, not right now, but I will reserve my right to ask more questions later.
Okay. Well, at, at, at this time, then I guess we can open the public hearing again.
Well, just to help you out, since you don't know from this whole Hollywood squares, who's the actual kind of representative? I, I will say that Yvonne has been, I've been in the, in touch with her the most. And then Kurt Swearingen from the church has been the lead from the church. And I would let the two of them decide who wants to speak first. I don't know.
Okay. So, so yeah, just state your name, um, address and affirm to tell the truth. Who, whichever would like to go first, um, that I'm, whatever you guys feel like, I will write your name down. So I know.
This is Kurt Swearingen. My address is 1410 Ironwood Drive in Normal. And I affirm that I will tell the truth. Uh, and truthfully speaking, I'll say that Yvonne and Jason can go ahead and address any of the technical issues. And if there are questions from the church perspective, I will, uh, try to help with that.
My name is Yvonne Long. I'm with Haka Tolo and my address here is 801 West Main Street, Peoria, Illinois. And I affirm to tell the truth. Along with myself, as Kurt mentioned, we have Jason Hawksworth and Kirven Davidson. And I'm sure between the four of us that we'll be able to respond to any questions or concerns that you might have that we can, um, answer. So the, I, I would, um, along with what Mercy said is, is that this is a behind the meter ground mount solar array that does serve only the church.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicants because there was concern raised about the vegetation. Can you explain more, um, exactly what plants you're thinking of and kind of a maintenance cycle on those?
Kirven, um, I'm going to just touch base to see if he wants to speak specifically of plant type. As he's worked with our, uh, landscaper on previous projects for that. Although I would note that, um, and perhaps Jason might as well, is that the, it, the, the benefit besides the, um, besides supporting the, the ecological goals of the, of the church is really that, it is low maintenance and would just need to be mowed down, um, each year. So it does not require a tremendous amount of, of maintenance, which is the benefits of their operations as well. But that's not really the, the primary, uh, reason for selection. And then Jason or Kirven perhaps could talk a little bit more about the specific type of plants that would, uh, potentially be included in that, please.
My name is Kirven Davidson. I work with Haka Tolo, uh, work for Haka Tolo. My address is 801 West Main, uh, in Peoria, suite A221. And I definitely affirm to tell the truth, uh, and to that end, uh, you're very welcome. To that end, as far as the native pollinator, specific, uh, variety of plants, uh, that varies area to area because it depends on the native plants of the area. As it turn, as in, in turn of this particular property, that hasn't been determined yet. But they are generally, uh, pollinator friendly wildflowers, uh, and, uh, field grasses that generally grow to a height of a foot, uh, foot and a half, uh, and support the pollinator habitat as, as explained. And, uh, as was also pointed out, um, you know, they grow annually. It's very low maintenance. That's part of the reason why it's preferred. And it helps to offset the, uh, land use. So instead of just occupying all the land, it actually returns to the environment with supporting, uh, butterflies and pollinators. And, uh, uh, yeah, those kinds of species that are definitely hurting right now. So.
And could you be more specific, even if it's not specific to this site? In other installations, can you name the types of plants you've used and, and be more specific about them?
Unfortunately, I really, I really cannot. Um, the landscaper that we deal with, um, found the, we did a landscape, we did a pollinator landscape for the Mason County Health Department. And, um, uh, we tasked the landscaper with a, uh, variety of native plants. And so he dug into the actual species of the, uh, that should have been native to the area and selected a, uh, I believe a six plant variety, but unfortunately that's as much as I know.
I actually can speak to the, the plant selection for that project. Uh, there, there are actually several, but examples include the northern drop seed, June grass, a butterfly weed, a knotting onion, prairie, or sorry, purple prairie, clover, uh, wild petunia, black eyed susan.
Thank, thank you. Because I think that's, you know, been a concern that again, this, I, I know one of the questions raised was, was this is going to be a weed patch? And, um, and presuming too, I'm not an expert on prairie plants, but you're actually probably looking at about a three-year effort until the plants really take hold and it doesn't become a weed patch. If that's, if that's the usual maintenance cycle and those kind of things and to make sure there's a clean establishment.
Yeah.
I, if I may speak quickly to the, uh, to the installation process during the, during the time period where we, while waiting for the pollinators to take hold, weed control is part of the process. So that like you say, it does not become a weed patch, but that's, that is part of the plan. So.
Great. Thank you, Karen. Uh, any other questions for, um, or, or do the commissioner have any other questions? Rachel?
Saw it coming, didn't you?
Yeah, I did. And when you unmuted, you scared me there.
Um, I have a question, uh, for the applicants. Um, and I think Greg had mentioned earlier about the alternative option of putting the panels on the roof. So what, what is the benefit of having the solar arrays mounted on the ground versus having them on the roof? And was that something that you all, um, you know, kind of did a cost benefit analysis of doing?
Kurt, do you want to speak to the church's perceptions regarding that?
Yeah, then maybe Jason might be able to, to chime in too on the, the actual installation. Rachel, the, the pitch, um, on the church roof is extremely severe on the area that would be facing the south. When we began the initial dialogue of even looking at this project, um, we were concerned with how we would mount them on that roof. And it's not all flat. There's a part of it that's flat and then it kind of curves around, um, the end of the sanctuary. So that primarily was the big reason we did not pursue, um, the roof mounting. As far as the cost analysis, I, I don't recall any cost analysis.
My name, my name is Jason Hawksworth and my address is 801 West Main as well. And I affirm to tell the truth. Uh, and I think I'll just piggyback on Kurt's point and, and, and the steepness of the roof. And, and ultimately we're, ultimately we're trying to get southern exposure, right? And, and actually the steep portion of the roof, um, faces more southeast. And so, so it really, the cost benefit calculation that you refer to is more related to the, the severe losses in production that would have been on, first of all, we, first of all, we couldn't get the capacity that we were hoping to achieve on the roof in, in, at any point, no matter, uh, and then, and then also the efficiency losses of having a a southeastern array and, and a large portion of that southeastern array with an extreme slope. Those were all the factors that, that mitigated, uh, us needing to, uh, move to the ground. And, and, uh, you know, we, we, we definitely kicked it around a lot in the beginning and, and that's, this is where we ended up.
Very good. Thank you.
What, uh, then maybe this is, is for Kurt or Jason too. What, what, did you guys have, make any effort to talk to the neighbors at all prior to doing this? That seems to be a, a sort of a, a, uh, theme, um, in their, their responses that they, uh, they had no idea that this was coming until they, they received, um, notice from the town of Normal. So I just wanted to check on that.
We did not, Mr. Zimmerman.
Was there any reason? I mean, I don't know that you, you had to. I was just curious as to, as to, uh, um, the thought process that went into it.
No, there was no, uh, reason not to. It's just wouldn't, we were following a process and, and, uh, kind of got caught up in what we were doing with the town. As, as Mercy said, we spent a great deal of time with, with her and Greg on uh, that part of the process. So, uh, no, there's no reason. It wouldn't, we weren't trying to hide anything.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions of, uh, of Kurt, Yvonne, Karen or Jason?
I have a question, I do.
Yep. Go ahead, Bob.
Thanks. Um, so I'm really impressed with this project and it's my overall view that we should have a lot more, um, solar projects of all kinds, um, to address the climate crisis. Like AJ and perhaps like other, um, members of the planning commission, I went out to this, um, area to really study it. And my one concern is about the neighbors to the north, their, their concern regarding how the array will look from the south facing part of their house. There are screen porches out there and patios and, uh, the array, as the, the staff's very helpful uh, computer generated renderings demonstrate, the array is visible from those areas. And so those, those neighbors have a concern, um, that it'll be unsightly. And as Mercy mentioned, they, they fear that perhaps this will affect their property values. I wonder whether there are steps that could be taken to, I, I understand, and I'm in support of the planning of additional trees to create more screening. There is the berm, um, but a- as AJ observed, uh, the houses who would be viewing this are, are elevated. So the, the array is visible. I wonder if there's more that could be done to screen the, just the visuals, you know? Mercy has explained there's, they don't make noise. They don't pollute things. There really are no other issues as far as I could tell, except the visual appearance. And I wonder whether there's somewhat more that could be done to protect the neighbors to the north from the visual impact. It's lovely to be able to look out on an open field. I, I guess I don't really feel that that's something that's guaranteed to one neighbor by another. So I'm, I think people need to be ready to deal with some change. But it seems like a sort of middle path could be if we can provide some additional screening on the north side there to protect the neighbors from what they consider a serious, I guess you could call it an aesthetic impact on their homes.
Well, and so, I'll go ahead, Yvonne.
The, 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 the existing evergreen trees bear anywhere from 15 to 20 feet in height. The, what, what we had talked about both with the church and with, um, staff was, was essentially kind of filling in that block for screening versus doing a fence. I know there was a comment about not wanting a fence and others have suggested, um, that the six foot height of the evergreens that would be the alternating ones in between all of those sections that would fill in the screening. There's 34, um, additional trees planned, uh, to, um, along both of those sides to completely enclose the array. We estimate that there'd probably be about two to three feet, uh, based on the, um, elevation of the rear yards there. Where they would potentially be able to see above those, um, the, the new tree plantings that would be, that's part of our, um, part of our site plan. There, there could be. There, there could be ways that, that we could lower it. It would potentially change the footprint and have other influences in terms of, you know, what would go underneath of it. Because it's currently has that height completely set upon supporting that pollinator habitat.
And Bob, to, to your comment, I mean, some, some of the neighbors wanted more trees, some did not, some, there was, there was talk of no fencing. And so, and so it was, I, I don't know that there, there is a, there's a answer that, that would satisfy all of the neighbors simply because, I mean, they have different wants of this property. I mean, and to your point, a property that, that is, there, there is, there is some distance too. There is, their property, there's a fence, there's, there's a, there's a green space before you get to a two-lane road. And then on the other side of the two-lane road, there's some more green space before you have a berm with those trees planted on it presently. And so a long way of saying that, that we got comments on both sides from, from the neighbors to the north.
And Mr. Broad, what, what I would add is the, Yvonne and Jason and Kevin have worked with the town of Normal to address those gaps that we currently have in our evergreens. So, you know, because they've been willing to work with, we've added those to the renderings. And we are willing to continue to work with town staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bob.
I was just saying thank you for the information.
I'll just add real quick a, a comment to kind of this idea about shielding and, and the trees and all of that. I see that the, the location of the new trees will kind of be staggered against the existing trees, which I think is a, a great idea. And I, I too drove by the site just to get a visual and check it out and see for myself. And actually, just north of the fields subdivision, there's another row of evergreen trees that are also staggered in that same manner. And it is almost virtually impossible to see through those trees. Now, I also know that I was on the ground level and not elevated, like some of the houses are to the north of this area. But I, I think staggering the trees like that, and especially when they, they grow out more and they, they mature, they're going to get thicker and, and it will become more shielded as time goes on. So I just, I like that approach with the trees and staggering them. And I think that will help, it'll help. It's not, like someone else said, it's not going to be perfect, that it's not going to be, become invisible. But I think that will help as far as shielding.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for, for, for talking. If you don't have any more questions of the, of these four commissioners, then we can see if anyone else would like to speak. All right. Is there anyone else that may have something to say? No one else is on the, on the, on the phone, right, Mercy?
I do not believe so. No, I don't see anybody. So really, at this point, it's just folks raising their hands. And I saw Eric Jomey raise his hand.
That's correct. Eric Jomey, 1925 East Taylor in Bloomington. I'm a congregation member at First Presbyterian Church, and I just wanted to very briefly go on record as saying I am completely in support of this project. I believe this will be a very good project for the church ecologically, for energy usage. And it is in keeping with our mission of stewardship. So thank you very much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Eric. No other hands raised?
Well, the Ramses are not on mute anymore. So are you can?
I have a question. Is there any possibility that these trees could be larger than six feet? Because with the elevation of these homes, they are going to easily see above this for many years till these have more growth.
I don't know if there are any tree experts on this call, but I know there is a size at which it's too big to transplant a tree. But it's something we, it's something we could find an answer to, but I, I don't know the answer.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Colleen, my only reticence to that is that I, I believe it was the, the, the note from maybe the, the Stevens that, that didn't want any new trees and didn't want a fence. But, but in, in any event, yeah, so there are, there are sort of competing, competing solutions, there are mutually exclusive solutions that are being suggested, so.
Well, I, I'm not, our home doesn't face, face this, we're across the street. But I would point out that the fence behind those homes almost, I think there's only two on the far west side, but other than that, everybody can see over their fence because of the elevation of their home. So.
Yeah, when I was out there, I, I could, as I was driving on that street, I could see that the, the street was, was lower than the homes and also the, the berm. So yeah, that's, I, I appreciate your comment, so.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments that you would like, that you would like to say, or?
No, I don't, I don't believe I do. I think they've all been made known through the emails and the petition. Thank you.
Okay, well, well, thank you then. Yeah, there's a lot of people on this call. It's hard to see hands raised. So it looks like we don't have any, any, any other comments. Mike, did you have anything to say? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Well, at this point then, I guess we will close the public hearing and just again, are there any commissioners?
I see that Martin Hobbs has his hand raised. Is that right?
Yeah. Oh, okay. I can't see certain people. They did, I don't know where they are.
Yeah.
Sorry, this is Martin Hobbs, 312 Thomas Court in Eureka, Illinois. And I do affirm that I will speak the truth. Again, I'm Martin Hobbs. Let me start by thanking the planning commission for being given this opportunity to speak. I first started attending First Presbyterian Church nearly 50 years ago as a young child. I know I don't look that old, but I have a long history with this church and can attest to their desire to be responsible members of the community and being active in local missions. The proposed ground mounted solar panels will expand the church's stewardship to God's creation by reducing our consumption of grid-based electricity, which is mostly produced from coal, a known significant contributor to climate destabilization. The solar panels will also reduce our electricity costs, which will provide additional money for church programs, including local missions that we already contribute a, a large amount to in Wilmington, Normal. I do have a question for the, the commission. And I didn't, because you, you say you're kind of breaking new ground here with, with the zoning and, and permits and that kind of thing. I didn't know how familiar you guys were with the, you know, Illinois program, the path to 100% renewable and the House Bill 5429. I know in that House bill, it prohibits like housing authorities or from, from prohibiting solar installations and things like that in an effort to encourage solar development. Do they give, but I assume that has no bearing on municipalities. But is there, are you aware, is there's anything in this bill to give municipalities like the town of Normal any increased latitude in improving, or in improving these projects, making it easier and more streamlined to, to do such a thing? Are you aware of anything like that?
If anyone were aware of that, it would be Brian Day, corporate counsel, because he keeps track of bills that are being proposed in the state. There are certain, there are certain things that home rule municipalities like Normal can do that maybe others can't. There are, sometimes laws get passed that mean we can't do whatever we want either. But Brian, do you know anything about solar legislation?
I'm not, not with respect to municipal, at least nothing pending on the horizon at the moment. Typically, sometimes the approach of the general assembly is like what you said, they'll come in and prohibit regulations on certain things. We've seen that a lot with telecom facilities, things like that. In terms of giving greater ability, we are somewhat constrained by due process principles and constitutional principles. The courts have set out certain factors that we have to consider when we're looking at zoning decisions. So I don't know that we could come in and just say, or the general summit could come in and say, you know, we're giving you greater authority to allow these things anywhere you want them under your zoning code. There may be other regulatory measures that I'm not aware of, but right now, I don't, I haven't seen anything with respect to municipal authority.
Okay. I, I wasn't sure. I know that they made some allowances like within housing authorities, but I know that, you know, that's not what we're dealing with here. Okay, well, again, I'd just like to voice my support for the solar installation plan and would like to thank the planning commission for providing the opportunity for not only our input, but everybody, you know, for or against being able to be part of this democratic process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. And I, I just Googled that thing real quick. It looks like that is specific to homeowners associations and condo unit owners associations. So I don't know that, that it's applicable, but it's, it's at least informative. So. Thank you. And Mercy, you seem to have a, a bigger picture of people than me. Do you see anyone else's hand raised?
I see Barbara Gaff.
I see Barbara, yes.
Awesome.
Oh, Barbara, you're on mute.
My name is Barbara Gaffron, and I live at 227 Spring Ridge Drive in Bloomington. I'm a member of the congregation. I affirm that I'll tell the truth, but I would just like to affirm and, and be part of the public record as being in agreement with this project. It, it will help us live our ethics as congregational members to live peacefully with the earth and to free up some monies that are going to utilities to better serve mission in our community.
Thank you, Barbara. I appreciate your comment. All right, Mercy and Mike.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we see you, Ms. Colleen Ramsey. Go ahead.
Actually, it's Joe Ramsey. I'm Colleen's husband, 2021 Dream Drive, and I affirm to tell the truth.
Thank you, Joe.
The one thing I would like to say is I think we're all hopeful of being good as far as the environmental aspects of this. That is, that is not something we're opposed to. I think the one thing I'd like to point out is those people who are just north of this, this project will actually be closer to being in their backyards than it will be being in First Press backyard. So I think that's a big part of the issues with regard to the concerns that all of these people have expressed. We are not opposed to the, most of the, the arrays that I've seen haven't been within the town proper. They've either been, and if they have been, they've been mounted on roofs. I spend a lot of time in Arizona and they do a lot of this. And it's typically in rural farm ranch settings where these arrays are set up. All the people that have sent in emails or letters are basically concerned, again, about the aesthetic aspect of it more so than anything else. We're not opposed to anything that would improve the environment. And I just wanted to go on record as having said that, I think anything that can be done to improve what these people are going to be looking at their sunrooms, backyards, whatever, in terms of a vision is, is something that I hope you'll consider. Because it's, it will not be very attractive for many years. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Joe. And that, that's a, a reason that I wanted to just understand really why it had to be at that certain location. And, and Mercy, if you go to slide nine there, or someone, whoever's handling that. What, that, I mean, it really is that high and up there because of the, what, stormwater sewer? Is that what you said, Greg?
Yeah, there's a storm sewer that runs through the property up.
So it runs through diagonally across the property, so it couldn't, it couldn't have been lower or, or more to the south or more towards the buffet place there. So I, I appreciate your, your concern. I, it, it just could not have been there, if that makes sense.
Sure. I, I think the whole thing would have been acceptable if it could have been on the roof or, you know, even further away. Anything would be helpful, so. But I see what you're saying as well.
All right, thank you.
AJ, earlier Sarah Jomey had her hand up and Merrily White currently has her hand up.
Thank you. I, I can't see these people. So Sarah Jomey?
Okay, um, my name is Sarah Jomey. I live at 1925 East Taylor in Bloomington. I affirm to tell the truth. I am a member of this congregation as well. And I think that this is a, a good project. And we will try our hardest to make it a beautiful and functional place for everyone who lives in the area, including the animals. But that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. And then the other person?
Ms. White? Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, my name is Merrily White, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all today. I live in Normal at the Menonite Residential Community at the corner of Cottage Avenue and Hovey. And I would add that since I've lived here, the Menonite Church has put solar panels on their roof. They've put solar panels on the community center. And if we ever figure out how, we're going to get them on the houses too. So I'm really excited about this. And I, as usual, take a different perspective than many people. My sister and her family live in Vermont and I frequently go there. And I don't know when, but maybe five, six years ago, I was there in the summertime. And they had solar arrays, acres and acres of solar panels. And I was so excited about it and made my sister stop the car so I could take a picture. And there's no barriers, there's no fences, there's no trees, there's nothing. There he ate, like I say, acres and acres of them everywhere. And, and I, and I say them as beautiful. So I'm having some problems dealing with all these issues about how it's going to look. And I would also want to add that I drove through the subdivision just north of our church property. And a lot of those people, those houses are never, there's no way that they're going to see our property. They can't even see the roof of the church just because of the lay of the land. So I, I agree, some of the, the houses right just on the other side of that street will be able to see into our property. But I hope that we, and I'm sure we will do this aesthetically as we can, but I hope that it is not a, a sad thing for people to look at and will see this as the coming thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrily. Okay, well, I do not see any more hands up.
You've got a couple, AJ, Nathan Carpenter, and Mr. and Mrs. M- Uh, you've got a couple, AJ, Nathan Carpenter and uh, Mr. and Mrs. Menser have their hands up.
Okay, Mensor and Carpenter.
Hi, my name is Nathan Carpenter. I live at two hundred Ellis Avenue in Normal and I am a member of First Presbyterian Church, uh, where I've been a member for uh, five years now. And quite simply, I, I want to uh, again, express my support for this project in agreement with all of my fellow congregants who have already made statements. Uh, they've done a very good job of expressing um, all of my uh, feelings and uh, support behind the project. And I think I would like to just add one additional item is that um, as my, my fellow congregants have said that this is uh, important to our, our uh, uh, mission of stewardship. And in many ways, these panels and uh, 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 this work that we're doing is an important expression of our faith. Uh, again, it's about care for creation and stewardship for our natural resources. And I look forward to the, the community seeing these with that, that understanding as expressions of faith, perhaps no different than stained glass windows, church bells, crosses, other religious symbols, and that we are a congregation of gardeners and birders, people who enjoy the outdoors. And that's everything that, that we are doing with this project, uh, as others have expressed, we do hope to make this as a, as aesthetically pleasing as possible as well because we take pride and ownership in uh, the, the work and the landscaping and the space that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and now we can go to the Mentners.
Hi, uh, my name's Rob Menser. Live at one nine five seven three Oakwood Drive in Bloomington. I've been a member, my wife and I have been members for more than thirty years at First Presbyterian Church. Won't rehash things that uh, the other folks in support of the project have uh, said. Oh yeah, I uh, affirm I will tell the truth.
Thank you.
And uh, I uh, um, just want to go on public record is uh, that we are also uh, here in support of uh, what we consider to be a very important environmental project.
Sounds good. Thank you. And, and um, and Becky, we have your email too, but is there anything you wanted to say? And Matt, we'll get to you in a second. I see your hand over there.
No, my, my position was stated in the email. Thank you, AJ.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, uh, Matt Wilcox.
Hi, my name is Reverend Matthew Wilcox. Uh, I live at four eighty-five Basswood Lane in Normal. Um, I affirm that I will tell the truth. Uh, I serve as the senior pastor at First Presbyterian Church of Normal. I do want to go on public record in um, my positive affirmation on this project, thankful for those that have fostered it and come alongside us for the work and time um, of the employees and the dedicated individuals at the town of Normal. Um, and I do also want to say, uh, in addition to the ecological um, focus that we have for this project, we do certainly value the voices and the presence of our neighbors. Um, as others have mentioned, that can be seen in our um, distinct work to try to support the, the mission agencies and the communities um, that call this place home. Um, and so I do want to express uh, some regret that we weren't uh, more uh, forthright in reaching out to our neighbors directly to the north of us. Um, and do want to say that I would be more than willing to speak with them in any occasion um, in order to uh, affirm that we value their voices, their opinions, and certainly their presence um, as they contribute to what makes this a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, gonna look here and see if there's anybody else. Oh, there's Marie.
Hi, I'm Marie Niebel Schwam. I live at two hundred Bellevue Avenue in Normal and I affirm to tell the truth. I also just want to go on public record in support of this project and also to kind of echo what's been said, to work in good faith with our neighbors and the residents north of this site, to do everything we can to make this as beautiful of a environmental and stewardship project as we can. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Marie. And now it looks like Doug Schwam.
Hi, my name is Doug Schwam. I also am a resident of two hundred Bellevue in Normal. Um, I'm a member of the church on, on this session and uh, I also really do want to affirm that we, we very much care about the, the opinions of our neighbors and we will work hard to not only bring their concerns um, into our own concerns, but, but hopefully find a, a great resolution that, that brings a, a solution that, that can help the environment, that can help um, this property, but also can help the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. Okay, I'll do one check here. It looks like, oh, anyone else here? Nope. Okay, it looks like we have everybody. Do anyone see the, Mercy, anyone see any hands up before I move on?
I, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this point, we will close the public hearing and uh, and I would just ask for the commissioners if they had any que- any further questions to staff. And if not, then we would be uh, ready to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the project as presented with any stipulations that staff presents.
Thank you, Mike. A second.
I, I will second, but I, I do have a comment as well. I, I guess I'll go ahead and hop into that. Um, first of all, I, I want to thank Reverend Wilcox for the acknowledgement that uh, and showing some regret that the neighbors um, weren't, weren't reached out to more proactively. So uh, I, I, I'd certainly appreciate that acknowledgement and I, I hope the neighbors do as well. Um, I also think the church is to be um, applauded for thinking so big picture and to be for, so forward-thinking on this issue. I think that's terrific and I'm, I'm sure we will see more of these in the community. It, it does seem that there is some tension uh, between the town's laudable stated desire to be a regional leader on, on these sorts of issues and the fact that our, our code is, is again, was acknowledged earlier is, has fallen behind. Um, and I understand that's very difficult and that's not really the, it's not really our purview, but perhaps it's something that um, council and, and staff uh, want to take up uh, or, or look into um, before we, we fall a little further behind, but it's uh, this is an exciting project.
I thank you, RC. Um, also, uh, Mike uh, made the motion, RC seconded, so um, Mercy, can you take uh, role?
Yes, I can. Um, one second. Mr. McBride.
You're muted, RC.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Broad.
Yes.
Mr. Matika.
Hi.
Ms. Lund.
Yes.
Mr. Bozer.
Yes.
Ms. Wittergren.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yeah.
So this, just for everyone's information, this will also go to the town council on Tuesday, the nineteenth. As I've mentioned to Colleen and email and others um, through email, the town council meeting isn't technically a public hearing, so the um, ways in which you can participate are slightly different, but you can. So I would recommend that you get in touch with me since you already have my email, or you can contact the city manager's office and they can, you know, let you know how all that goes. Um, and I will share all the emails that I've received thus far with the council as well. So they'll be, and they get the minutes of this meeting too. So um, if, but if anyone has any follow-up questions, feel free to contact me.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, Mercy. I, and I just, I too wanted to thank everyone for being and uh, for all of you for showing up and, and saying what you had to say. And this was really, was really helpful. And to, to the people that didn't talk and, and um, and sent in emails and, and let us just know that those were, those were read and, and, and looked at. Uh, and, and, and we tried to ask a lot of the questions, so they're out here for you, for you to, to, to um, uh, see that, that, that those were, those were taken uh, very, very seriously as well. So I greatly appreciate this process and um, I thank all of you and RC and, and Rachel, welcome. Good to have you back, RC and Rachel. Uh, great to have you as well. Um, at this point, I guess uh, we'd be ready for a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else, Mercy, we need to take care of.
There is not, although I can tell you that we will have a meeting in February. So um, if you can't make it, let me know, but I'll send an email around pretty soon.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, I guess I'll call the roll. Um, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yeah.
Colin, I'm first. Uh, Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Wittergren.
Yes.
Mr. Broad.
Yes.
Mr. Bozer.
Yes.
Ms., or Mr. Matika.
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Lund.
Yes.
Okay, well, I think that's it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.